And I'll ask Ms. Story if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Mr. Waller, we need certification of closed meeting.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of November fourteenth, twenty nineteen pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven twelve of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
Sorry about that.
So moved.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next item is approval of the agenda. This is an action item.
I move that we approve the agenda as read.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, we have action on closed meeting items. Personnel report, Dr. Buck.
Madam Chair. Accept the personnel report as presented.
I second the motion.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next item, pupil personnel report, Dr. Buck.
Madam Chair.
Move that we accept the pupil personnel report as presented.
I second the motion.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, we have reports by the superintendent, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first agenda item under reports by the superintendent are the good news report for Purple Star Schools' recognition. I'd like to call to the podium Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw, Public Information Officer.
Good evening. Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience at home some of the excitement that happens in our schools each and every day and some of the great accomplishments of both our students and our staff. Tonight, we're proud to announce that two more of our schools have been selected to receive the Virginia Distinguished Purple Star School designation for their strong support of military-connected students. Nansman Parkway Elementary and John Yates Middle School will join Northern Shores Elementary School with this designation. This award was announced recently by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity of Military Children. The Purple Star designation will help guide military families to schools that have supports in place for children who change schools frequently because of military relocations. Dan Dunham, the military student and family specialist with the Virginia Department of Education, was invited, but at the last minute was unable to attend tonight. I have asked representatives from the schools to share with you in more detail how they help our military-connected students. So first, I'd like to call up Nansman Parkway Elementary School Principal Jennifer Connor and team leader to share, followed by John Yates Middle School Principal, Dr. Wendy Van Hosen and her team, to brief us on earning the Virginia Distinguished Purple Star School designation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent, other board members, and distinguished guests. We are very excited and honored to have received this award from the Virginia Department of Education. Currently, Nansman Parkway has one hundred twenty-five military families with one or more children attending our school, which is approximately about thirty percent of our total student population. A few things that our school is doing currently to support and meet the needs of military families include the following. We are providing support and guidance for students when deployments and homecomings occur for their parents and/or close family members. We are in contact with the military representatives of all branches to be aware and supportive of activities that might possibly involve our students. We have an increased awareness and support of the needs of our military families and students among our staff. We have a military liaison that is available to provide support, materials, and guidance for our students and families. Our students wrote over one hundred and seventy-five deployment letters to our service members in October currently. Just last Friday, we had a Veterans Day assembly honoring our veterans and current military members, and also dedicated a wooden flag, art piece made by veterans. Our media specialist has created a gallery of photos of military families and is constantly updating the site. We will be creating a scrapbook of all our military appreciation events for our military families, and in the upcoming months, we will be having events and celebrations in support of our military families. We are so excited and grateful to be a support and resource for our military students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gordon, School Board Chairman, School Board members and guests. I am Dr. Van Hosen, Principal John Yates Middle School. We embrace and engage every charger every day. We are delighted to have earned the designation for our Purple Star. I'm going to allow Mr. Kubenak to share some information regarding our Purple Star designation. He was instrumental in making certain that this happened for our school.
Thank Dr. Van Hosen. Members of the board, Dr. Gordon, colleagues, and my dear citizens, thank you for the opportunity to take a moment of your time to provide some information about the Purple Star designation. In addition to the award requirements, which are included in the application process, we're also thankful for the board's approval and recognition of military-connected families back in September twenty eighteen, so we appreciate your support of military families. In addition to these other requirements of the application process, the selection committee also considers additional support programming that has applicants implement certain measures during the school year. For John Yates Middle School, the following items have been implemented or planned for the twenty nineteen twenty school year. Two separate Military Care Package drives, which one is actually occurring now and one will actually occur during the month of April, and these package drives coincide with the month of the military family and also the month of the military child. Our peer transition team, called the Greet Squad, is coordinated by our Guidance Department. Members who are selected by an application process are paired with newly enrolled students to assist them with acclimating to the JYMS environment. This positive connection is kept for at least one academic term or ten weeks, giving enrollees a resource for school procedures, programs, a first acquaintance, or friend at our school. We believe this fits well with our school motto of every charger, every day. Any students who are military-connected are referred to our military liaison to determine their needs. Jennifer Sprinkle, our Military and Family Life Counselor, conducts lunchtime sessions and other services with military-connected students who wish to participate in support activities. Items include anti-bullying projects, student-designed visuals posted around our building about the places they have been, and also bulletin boards designed to highlight the positive character traits of military-connected students. Through team-building, reflection, and service-related activities, the lunch bunch, lunch bunch, as we call them, generates an incredible rapport with Ms. Sprinkle and also with their fellow students. Our first-day welcome, where we invite students to have their parents bring them to the school building for the first day of class, as well as education partners, community members, and local service personnel, gives our school a warm welcoming environment on the very first day of class. Mr. Minnick has come to a couple of them so far. We've been, you know, so happy to see him there. He gets a kick out of giving folks high fives and handshakes on the first day of class. It's been a great way to welcome kids back from a long summer, but also to welcome kids that have not yet been to John Yates and welcome them into our John Yates family. Overall, while we are thankful for the Purple Star designation, as it is a confirmation of the collective efforts of all the John Yates family, we're even more thankful simply for the ability to serve those military-connected families. Those who sacrifice greatly so that the American way of life can continue and so that our freedoms are always protected. While our country's bravest men and women fight and serve locally and downrange, we want them to know that we will care for their children and ensure their academic and other needs are met with the highest quality of service and support. We appreciate the opportunity to bring this to you, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But Gordon, on-time graduation rate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of the great things that we are really proud of in Suffolk Public Schools, and I'd like to call to the podium Dr. Ron Lee, Director of Secondary Leadership. Dr. Lee? Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gordon. It gives me great pleasure to be able to present some really good news, and that is our high school graduation report. I hope this is working. I guess here it is. But before I do that, there are three people who, without them, it would have been extremely difficult to make this great achievement. So at this time, I would like to introduce the graduation coaches from Kings Fork High School, Ms. Kara Byrd, from Lakeland High School, Dr. Tanya Sproul, and from Nazron River High School, Ms. Stacy Woolerton. These young ladies have done a tremendous job, and I think all of the principals at the high school would tell you they are invaluable. So a couple of things that we want to do before we talk about this report is look at a couple of definitions. On-time graduation. To make it really simple, this is, this represents the percentage of students who earn a diploma within four years. So they have, if they enter as, when they enter in as a freshman, they have four years to earn their diploma. And these are based on student-level data and mobility and retention. So, for example, it takes into account if a student moves, or if a, if a student just does not finish it, it takes all of those things into account. So an on-time graduation rate, the higher the number, the better. Next, we have our cohort dropout rate, and this represents the percentage of students who have not graduated or who have completed an approved diploma within a allotted time. This also takes into account students who discontinue school or are unaccounted for. So sometimes students may leave a high school in Suffolk. We have to find them. We have to make sure that they have enrolled in another accredited school. So in our, in this situation with dropout rates, the lower the number, the better. Now, with you, when you look at state accreditation and you see green, yellow, and red, the VDOE, the Department of Education, has a school profile, and if you go look, each school has its own profile. And green is good. Yellow means caution, and red is not good. So again, we see that the smaller the number, any school that has a dropout rate greater than or equal to six percent is green, greater than six percent to nine percent is yellow, and if it's greater than nine percent, that is red. So we want to make sure that our dropout rate is obviously less than ten percent, but the smaller, the better. One of the things you will see here is our on-time graduating, a three-year profile. So for example, all of the schools starting with Kings Fork, Lakeland, and then Nazron River, in twenty sixteen, Lakeland and Kings Fork were around eighty-four percent, Nazron River was at ninety-three percent, and we jumped to two thousand eighteen nineteen last year. Kings Fork jumped from nine, jumped from eighty-four to ninety percent. Lakeland stayed pretty much the same, and Nazron River jumped to ninety-five percent. If you look at the bottom, we, it's a comparison between our high schools and the division average and the state total. Now, when you look at graduation rates, all schools have to get, have to achieve eighty-eight percent. That's a baseline. And this is the on-time graduation rate by subgroup because, of course, the accreditation model, we have to take subgroups into consideration. And just tremendous growth, particularly with our students who historically may not have the highest graduation rates. African-American students went from eighty-four percent to eighty-eight point one, so we see they, they made the actual baseline. And also, take a look at our students with disabilities. Tremendous growth from sixty-eight percent to eighty point two. So that, that is a tremendous, tremendous growth with our, with our subgroups. Our cohort dropout rate, again, the smaller the number, the better. And at Kings Fork, Kings Fork went from nine point eight percent in two thousand sixteen to five point five. Tremendous job. Lakeland High School went from ten point three to five point six, and Nazron River went from four point oh to less than a, less than a point. So that, that is tremendous, that that was less than one percent. You can see at the bottom our division total, and look at the state average. So we want to make sure that we compare ourselves not only to each other, but to the state as well. So some of the highlights. So overall, the division rate was ninety point three. We improved by four percentage points. The district level rates improved for all subgroups, with most improvement occurring with our students with disabilities. The largest graduation rate, and you have to, you have to excuse me because I'm really proud of this, occurred at Kings Fork High School, which had the greatest increase within the region. So really proud. And the special education graduation rates improved at all high schools. So a lot to be proud of. Again, I, I point to these three young ladies because not only the, the title may say graduation coach, but most of them, I believe all of them, also are in charge of attendance review. So they make sure they hunt down our students who are not coming to school and finding out why, and providing them other alternatives, and, and working with families to make sure that we can get them to school. Because if a kid is in school, there's a greater chance he's going to graduate. So they, they are the worry mothers. They, they make sure that they get to know those parents. So again, another highlight, the overall division level dropout rate decreased from seven point one to four point three. They improved at all high schools. Nazron River had the fewest dropout rate, uh, dropouts with a rate of, again, point eight percent, and spare dropout decreased from twenty-three point four to eleven percent. Again, just tremendous job. Really proud of the coaches, the faculty and staff at all of the high schools, because there had to be tremendous buy-in for this to work. This is a work of the heart, and so we, we want to try to save all students. Every, every child is a star. That, that proves that we have staff and faculty at our high schools that are really reaching out to the parents and to the students to make sure that they can be the best that they can be. If there are any questions, certainly I can answer those, and we have these three lovely young ladies that can answer questions more specifically at their building.
I, I'd like to say personally a thank you from the board to you three. I know it took a lot of manpower, womanpower, to get it done, you know, but we know it's a very valuable duty that you are performing, and this reflects on that. Thank you so much from the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Was there a question?
It's not, my question, it's maybe not directed to you directly, Dr. Lee, but, um, Dr. Sproul did something at Lakeland that I think would be beneficial if we could implement division-wide. And what she did was she reached out to key stakeholders, I think it was two churches that I can recall off the top of my head, and they did tutoring programs. And it was excellent because I remember helping out with transportation, getting some of the kids who need transportation back and forth. I think that's something that we should look into to see if we could possibly mirror that throughout our division. But once again, thank you for the great work you all are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you.
Next, we have introduction of new administrative staff. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Byram. So we want to do some things a little different, where when it comes to introducing our administrative staff, we want to make sure at the building level that our faculty and staff has the information first, and then also to celebrate the appointments at the central office level for any position coordinator and above to be recognized publicly at school board meetings. So with that in mind, I'm going to start with our new Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Dr. Lawrence Whiting. Mr. Whiting, would you mind coming to the podium as I give you all your accolades? Uh, Dr. Whiting has a Bachelor of Arts from University of Maryland College Park, majoring in government and politics, Master of Arts in Education from Regent University, in the Master Teaching Program, Educational Specialist from Norfolk State University, probably makes Dr. Brown happy to hear that, also with a degree in administration and supervision. And recently, as of last week, he was confirmed as a doctor from North Central University, Prescott Valley. We are so happy to have Dr. Whiting on board, former experience that he has in both food and nutrition services and transportation from Portsmouth. Lawrence has done a tremendous job in the short time that he's been here, and we're so happy that you're a part of our team. Dr. Whiting, any family or any comments you'd like to add for the board?
Just say I'm happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, for working with these great students, and, and look forward to moving the program forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the gentleman that you actually just heard from, and he actually didn't know I was going to recognize him today. At our past meeting, both Dr. Whiting and Dr. Lee were actually approved by the board as part of our personnel report. But as part of this new process, we want to make sure that we give our administrators their just due. Dr. Ron Lee has a Bachelor of Arts from Elizabeth State University, the major in history, Master of Arts in Education from ECU, East Carolina University, in educational leadership, and a Doctor in Education from Virginia Tech University. He has actually been a principal at several locations in Suffolk Public Schools, and I would read them all to you, but we will be here till ten o'clock. But recently, as you can tell by his last presentation, he served as the principal of Kings Fork High School. And I honestly believe that the principal is the most important lever when it comes to student achievement and the growth of a school, and those data that you just saw for graduation rates and dropout rates, a lot of his great work. And it was no doubt in any of our amount on the team that Dr. Lee was going to become our next Director of Secondary Leadership. Very happy that he is part of the team and looking for him to be able to model some of the successful programs that he had all throughout the city of Suffolk. So, Dr. Lee?
Thank you.
Next, we have our Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and also the dual role of Clerk of the Board, Ms. Tasha Gardner, who is sitting up here. She's been shadowing our, our current Clerk of the Board, Ms. Chavis, for the entire day. She comes to us from Franklin City Public Schools, where she served as a Supervisor of Human Resources. She went to Tyrewater Community College with a major in social sciences. The good thing about Ms. Gardner is that she was here previously, and this shows the love that people have for Suffolk Public Schools because she came back. So, Ms. Gardner, thank you so much. I know it's been a whirlwind of a day. We're definitely so excited that she'll be joining us at the Virginia School Board Association Conference next week, learning the ropes. One of the first things I said to her was being able to keep up with my pace, which is pretty quick, but Tasha's a quick study. Everyone in the school administrative office loves her, which is so important to us, and we're also so happy that you're a part of the team. Ms. Gardner?
Thank you. I'm excited to be back. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the board looks forward to working with you, Ms. Gardner.
All right, and last but not least, it's always very difficult when you're following a successful principal like Dr. Ron Lee. And today, we made an announcement at Kings Fork High School. We were joined by Ms. Story and Mr. Riddick for our new principal announcement. One of the things that I had checked with the board on a couple of weeks ago was making sure that all of our faculty and staff will have the opportunity to meet our new leaders first, before it actually becomes part of the public. And I have held off on the pictures that we took today, posting that on social media, because I wanted to make sure that we gave this next gentleman his just due. I'd like to announce Mr. Derek Bryant as the new Principal of Kings Fork High School. As Mr. Bryant comes to the podium, a little bit of background. Went to Norfolk State University, degree in business management, also went to Ashford University, majoring in teacher leadership, Master's of Science degree from Regent University, educational leadership. Mr. Bryant has informed me that pretty soon he's going to become Dr. Bryant, so I'm holding you to that publicly. When Dr. Bryant, when Mr. Bryant actually interviewed with us, we were just so impressed with his vision for the school. And one of the things that he said that still resonates with our entire team was the fact that Kings Fork High School will become a ninety, ninety, ninety school in every category. And the amount of love, appreciation, teamwork, and unity that I saw from the faculty today when he was being announced, let me know and confirm that we made the right choice. So congratulations to you, Mr. Bryant. Any family members or anyone here you'd like to recognize?
Yes, first, I want to recognize my wife, my two sons, Derek and, and Dylan, and then my parents, Mr. and Mrs. Reginald Bryant.
Very good. Could all of y'all please stand for us, please, so we can, yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have something I'd like to say. This is near and dear to my heart. This young man's a Nansman River graduate. He's a graduate from Suffolk Public Schools. He was a fine athlete. He was a scholar. He was my student. And he, oh, I see Mr. Skinner back there giving a little cheer as well. And this young man has always been the epitome to me of integrity, and that is what it takes. And Dr. Lee has set the foundation. Now we know what to expect.
Absolutely.
And I hold you to it.
Absolutely.
But I love you.
Thanks.
And now we have special recognition of Ms. Chavis.
So she didn't really know this was going to occur. So Ms. Chavis, would you mind coming around and standing in front of the dice, please?
Oh.
So very similar to Mr. Bryant replacing Dr. Lee, one of the conversations I had with Ms. Gardner was that she's also replacing a legend. Ms. Cindy Chavis has been with Suffolk Public Schools for twenty-nine years. Either one, come to the podium, yeah, that's fine, go to the podium. And nineteen years as Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and School Board Clerk. And one of the, the comments that was actually made today by Ms. Byram was, "We don't know what we're going to do without you." Because she's handing us the notes, keeping everyone on task, and I remember when I was watching several of the videos preparing for this position, hearing "motion carries" was one of the great things that I will never, ever forget. So publicly, Ms. Chavis, we definitely want to thank you for your years of service to Suffolk Public Schools. Please, don't be a stranger. We really will always consider you family. Thank you for all of your hard work in serving our school division, working with several different boards, several superintendents, and you will always be a proud member of our school division. I have a couple of things I want to bring you right now, but I know the board may have some comments as I'm bringing them down to you, so stay right there.
I, I would like to say a couple of things. I'm never speechless, I know y'all think, but anyway. I have known this young lady since she was a child. We grew up in the same community, the Wailville community. We rode the school bus together. I knew her mother, her father, and all of her brothers, as naughty as they were. And she was the only girl, and she tried to keep them in check. Tried was the key word. I have worked with Cindy, Ms. Chavis, here on the board for many years. She's a very valuable asset, has been to Suffolk Public Schools. I think she's served with five different superintendents. She knows the ropes, and she has always been so efficient, and she has always helped us so much, especially board members, so attentive to our needs. And you're going to be missed, but I know, Ms. Gardner, you've got some big shoes to fill. But if you need anything, I'm sure she can help you out. We thank you so much, Cindy, for all you have done, and her expertise is, she knows so much about the school system. And we appreciate all your many hours that you never were paid for. And sometimes she would call me at one o'clock. She'd be up there in seventh floor office working on information for the school board. working on information for the school board. Dedication, that's what it's all about, and we appreciate you and we love you, and you have a lot of expertise, we know that. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
If you could ask the board and school administrative office, we'd like to present you with this lovely bouquet. We have to turn here for pictures. And we also have a plaque that says, "The Suffolk City School Board is proud to honor Cindy V. Chavis for 19 years of service as Clerk of the Board." That's what we have to model that up.
Just a little bit tonight. Sorry.
I do thank the board, I've enjoyed working with each of you, as well as numerous paths forward since I have been here. It gets challenging, gets interesting, gets busy. Ms. Gardner's had a very exciting day today, since her first day of many, but she stays with us, so that's a good thing. I am going to miss you, I'll miss some things, not miss some other things, late night meetings, so I may come to some just to see what's going on. Of course, I'll be around for the next couple of weeks, getting a lot of cleanup done, a lot of catch-up things, a lot of things still outstanding, so everything is in good shape when Ms. Gardner comes on, and she can just take off running, and I'm sure you'll all enjoy working with her. I've known her for many years, and she will be an asset to the board and to the school system. And again, I thank each of you.
Will you stand there for just a moment? I was given permission to speak, my mic is on. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your work. I've gotten messages from you at 3:00 in the morning, a text message, or you showed up at my door because I needed a packet of information to review, and I just want to say the kind of work attitude, the work ethic that you displayed is really going to make anybody who follows you make the shoes even bigger. I just want to say thank you personally for all the things you helped me with, and you did for us. I really do appreciate it, and I surely will miss you.
And on that note, next week is BSBA Annual Conference. Those of you that are attending, I will be seeing you sometime during this weekend, and I promise it'll be not late hours.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is week four, ladies and gentlemen, and it's been exciting and entertaining. I started speaking with our principals on October 10th, and we really had principal meetings. My goal was to make sure that I visited every school within the first two weeks, and discussing things with our leaders that we have. One of the first things I spoke about was the 925 years of administrative experience that we had with our principals in our buildings, and how I would be foolish if I did not lean on their institutional knowledge. I also asked each one of our principals, if they could have one thing for their school, what would it be and why? And this has all been part of my information gathering session, so that I could also make sure that when it came to the three community meetings that we had at our three high schools, that I could share some of that information, as well as share aspects of my vision. Thank you to Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw and her team, as we have putting the finishing touches on a public version of my superintendent entry plan, which is on our website now. We also have some hard copies that will be present in school, because one of the things that I promised our school board was an increased level of transparency, efficiency, the family atmosphere that I think we already have here in Suffolk, and I want to be able to build upon it, as well as collaboration. The day before I started, Sunday night, October 13th at 7:00 p.m., Ms. Bradshaw's team released a video with the goal of making sure that the entire city knew who their new instructional leader was going to be, but most importantly, so that they knew who our kids would know who their superintendent was. And I loved it, when I would walk into the schools and they would turn their Chromebooks around and say, "This is you, you're on my computer," or a couple of them actually thought that I was Clinton Jenkins, you know, when I walked in, which was interesting as well. But it's a situation where our kids now actually know me by name. And when we were at Kings Fork today, a couple of the students that Dr. Lee had introduced me to when he gave me the tour actually came up to me, and we had conversations about what we actually talked about two or three weeks ago. We have some great leaders here, and the city has shown really just so much love, they've given me feedback on what they think needs to happen, but they have also taken the time to praise all the hard work that Dr. Whitney had put forward, because the foundation is there. Darren did a tremendous job, as you saw from a lot of the data that Dr. Lee had up on the screen, and the fact that 100% of our schools are fully accredited. It's now my job to really keep that vision moving, and I wanted to make sure that when I was developing the entry plan for this school division, I wanted to make sure that my entry plan fit into building exceptional schools, our strategic plan. And we're going to put action steps to a lot of things. It's really exciting, today I was with the Rotary Club, thank you for the invitation from Patrick Belcher and Chris Robinson. I'm really talking to some people who are very influential in the city, and also wanted to make sure that I shared, you know, the vision of the school division moving forward with them. It is my job, and it is my goal, to make Suffolk Public Schools the premier school division in the state first, and then in the nation second, and I actually think that we are on our way. Phase two of my information gathering plan is I am now attending a faculty meeting for all of our schools, and I'm actually asking all three of our, all of our schools three questions. The first being, what is it that you like about Suffolk Public Schools? The second is, if you could change one thing about Suffolk Public Schools, what would it be and why, because you've got to give me the why? And the third is, how can the school administrative office support you? I'm a strong believer of keeping kids first. I'm also a strong believer that the school administrative office is there to support administrators. Administrators are there to support and serve teachers, and teachers are there to support and serve our students and the school community. And all of us have to be on the same page for that to happen. We received a lot of good positive feedback from this engagement plan, and I want to let our entire school community and the city of Suffolk know, this is just the beginning. We have some really important things that we're going to be releasing to you all in the next two months, that's my teaser right there, things that we really believe is going to help the tape instruction to the next level, collaboration to the next level, and also to continue to have two-way communication with the city of Suffolk. So the first 30 days, because today is day 30, have been so exciting. Thank you all for all of the compliments. Again, thank you all for the love, and I'm really so honored to be your superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you.
And next, we have Calendar of Special Events.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of important dates I want to make sure that our school community and the city of Suffolk is aware of. First, we have the Disability Awareness and Information Fair, that is tomorrow, Friday, November 15th. College and Career Readiness Fair, this Saturday, November 16th. Mr. Skinner has actually asked me to open that up, so I'm so excited to continue to talk about our career readiness, workplace skills that our kids have, and the fact that we really believe that our students are now really being prepared for the 21st century and even some jobs that do not exist yet. The 29th Annual Career Expo, Thursday, November 21st. We also have some parent and student information sessions that are coming up in the very near future. International Baccalaureate, Biomedical Sciences and Engineering, actually just occurred, November 13th. Advanced Placement Dual Enrollment and College and Career Academy-approved, November 27th, and the Governor's School for the Arts, December 3rd. One of the great things about the city of Suffolk is we are making sure that we have plans and programs and pathways for our kids based on their interests. This is something that we're also going to look to expand in the very near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Public speakers on agenda topics, I believe we have none?
No, there are no speakers at this time.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda, this is an action item. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Board members will please vote.
On item 14, it wasn't clear, does this mean that we're giving over the Childcare Center at the Prudence Center to the Children's Center? Will it not be available for Suffolk Public Schools to use as an education opportunity?
I believe that's a rental contract. It's a rental contract, the Child Center negotiates with us to use the facility at C-CAP.
Right. Didn't it used to be part of the education program for the child, students that were interested in becoming educated, early childhood?
I believe it's a twofold, right, come up, Mr. Skinner. He can explain it to you.
Good evening to all. Yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mignett. It still serves that purpose, a twofold purpose. It is a rent negotiated for the Children's Center, and our students who have enrolled in our early childhood development classes actually go in and they're able to kind of get work-based learning within that facility. So their class is kind of located right outside of the classrooms that the Children's Center operates off of this lease.
Okay, so this isn't a change at all?
Correct, it is not a change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I believe there was a motion and a second. Correct. Any other discussion, anyone?
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next is unfinished business. We have a number of ordinances that are up for second reading, Ordinance 19/20-21 through All of these have had first reading and discussion. And reviewed by the Policy Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept these policies for the way that they are written. We've reviewed them, and also, the Policy Committee has reviewed them, and they have already had the first reading.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Board members will please vote.
Under new business, Dr. Gordon, I believe we have a change in school board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that is correct. In looking at the calendar, there's a conflict with the original date that the board agreed upon, February 13th. That is actually the time that all of the superintendents in the United States will be at the AASA Conference, including myself, and due to the fact that's in the middle of budget season, I think I should be here for the board meeting, so I'm requesting that we move that school board meeting date back one week to February 20th.
This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move that we move the meeting back to February 20th, 2020.
Second. If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, we have a revision of the Budget Development Calendar for 2021. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, in discussions with our Executive Director of Finance, Ms. Wendy Forzeman, and requests that we have received, and looking at the historical minutes and meeting, Mr. Mignett had requested that we have a work session as we begin the budget cycle. We are requesting, as we look at the Budget Development Calendar for that work session to be planned, for school board budget items to be moved from today to December 12th. And as you can see, we also have other dates, making sure that we are in line with the Code of Virginia before the budget is officially approved by City Council by May 15th of 2020. I'm requesting that the board approves this budget development calendar as listed.
This is an action item. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the budget schedule as presented.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, in order is the Policy Review Committee Report. Dr. Buck?
Okay, yes, it's on. The Policy Review Committee met on October 24th, and prior to that, the Policy Review Committee met, as a matter of fact, this item was supposed to be on last month's action, this, the report that I'm giving you and the information, so you have had it now for two months. We'd like for the board to look at three different policies. There are two options for each one, and they have to do, the first with the Citizen Advisory Committee. You receive two recommendations. Recommendation one, each school board member will appoint one citizen from the board member's borough to serve on the Citizen Advisory Committee, and remaining appointments will be made as provided for in School Board Policy 2-2.7-2B. That's recommendation one. Recommendation two, and these have to do with Citizen Advisory Committees, recommendation two, all appointments will be made as provided for in School Board Policy 2-2.7-2B. School Board Policy 2-2.7-2B provides the following. B, the school board will appoint citizens to serve on Citizen Advisory Committees. The board will issue a public announcement and will determine the process for receiving applications and/or letters of interest from citizens to serve on Citizen Advisory Committees. In selecting citizens to serve on Citizen Advisory Committees, the school board should take into consideration, but not be limited to, the following. A, equitable distribution of Citizen Advisory Committee member. One would be, again, us selecting seven members, one from each borough, and then the remaining members would come through application or letter of interest, or whatever mechanism we decide to use. Or the other, we would not appoint persons, persons would volunteer for the committees and submit some type of letter of interest or application, if you prefer.
Ms. Story?
I think that was explained well. Recommendation one includes A and B, it's just, do we want the option of the board members being able to make an appointment from their borough, plus the rest being filled in with application from the public? The committee, advisory committees, most of them have a cap around 20 or 22, that's based on the law. It's in the law, in the code, that it should be less than each one, each advisory committee has that written into it, and we approve that, those advisory committees, at a previous meeting. So it's just, it's really not too different, it's just, does the board want a chance to appoint someone from their borough? It's just, does the board want a chance to appoint someone from their borough? And then the rest coming from, which would be anywhere between thirteen to fifteen, coming from the community by application? So that's the, that's the choice. The other one would be all of them coming from, if, if the board members don't appoint, I mean, don't take that option, then just those positions will be filled by the same, just applications from the community.
One, one other thing. There's one committee that has a limit, and I believe there was one that by law had twenty. All of them don't have to have twenty or fewer. At least that was...
That, that is correct. The, the way the policy reads is, it's up to that number. So you do have some flexibility in terms of how many members you want to actually have on those citizen committees. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, my recommendation would be that each board member appoint his or her own representative from their respective burrows to serve on those committees. And I'll stop there.
So...
Any others? Ms. Dory?
Okay. Mr. Riddick, so would that be recommendation? What you're talking about is that we should have a chance to appoint someone and then the rest of the committee be filled in with volunteers? If, if committee member, if community members want to volunteer up to that limit?
From my understanding of the policy, we don't have to have a large committee. That number isn't set. If seven of us here, we could easily have a committee composed of seven people unless there's a situation where the law dictates otherwise. My recommendation is that each board member appoint his or her own representative for that committee. And for some reason, if the board member does not have a appointee that he or she could appoint, then it would come to the board where then you could solicit a volunteer and then you follow suit with the application process. Is that how the policy is reading?
It, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't. We had two options. So you could either vote option one, that would be we appoint people. The only problem with that is if, for example, we have a committee and we limit the size of the committee, we're taking out almost half of the committee by appointing people we want on the committee. If there are citizens, we have fourteen thousand students plus. If there are citizens who would like to be a part of the committee, we have eliminated seven of the twenty positions from the beginning. And it would just be, since it's an advisory committee, our discussion, at least Ms. Dory's and my discussion, and that's why we have the two options, is that if we allow people to volunteer who are interested in it, then we'll get people, at least my position was, if we allow people to volunteer and we leave those slots open, that we'll get interest from people. If there are no people in my area, I, we want, we want, let me go back, we want information from the public about what they're interested in, in an advisory committee. We don't necessarily, or I don't necessarily want somebody giving me feedback on what I want. They're supposed to be coming to us, bringing us their ideas about whatever the topic is. Say, for example, if I don't have someone on CAC to be on the CAC committee and they already have rules that they abide by that are already in place, if I don't have someone to go on that committee, or if I appoint someone to that committee, that's someone that I picked, it's not necessarily from the people who are really interested in it. I picked them and told them they were going to be on that committee. I might be deleting a position for a parent who's really interested in working with the committee. The same thing is true for the gifted. If I say, I don't know how many gifted students we have, but if I tell parents and teachers who have children who are gifted, that they can't serve on the committee because we've taken up seven of the numbers, it can be a problem for them. So that's why I supported recommendation two. But this is why we brought it back to the board, because we wanted some discussion from you all and some information about what you support.
Madam Chair, my recommendation still stands the same. I think we're saying the same thing, Dr. Buck.
No, we're two different things.
In, in a sense of, if there are vacancies, they still have the right to come. I mean, I think we are, that, we're not putting a limit. There, there is no minimum number. So I think we are kind of going ahead of ourselves a little bit, because...
No, you said there's no maximum number. Is that what you're saying?
No. What I'm saying is, there is, when I used to figure, if seven of us here, we could appoint seven, that's seven appointees. But from my understanding of the policy, far as the making up of the committees, that it's not a minimum number, saying that you have to have this, only this amount of people. It's, it's not capped. So we're going with recommendation one, which is what I quoted, is, is saying the same thing.
No. The, the numbers are capped. That's what I was trying to explain to you. If we say we don't, we, if we are saying that the number has to be twenty and we choose seven people, we've taken almost half the committee based on what we want, rather than what the community wants who decides to participate. Number two says, we don't do that, that people who are interested, recommendation two is people who are interested can participate. Not somebody we picked, but people who are interested, can apply, can make application and participate in the committee. I don't know that we'd be turning down people who want to be a part.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If recommendation two is a policy current, does that mean that's how these advisory committees are getting filled at this point in time? That citizens are applying to serve on the advisory boards? Because I don't believe that that is what's happening.
No, we didn't say that. We said citizens can apply. That's what we're, that's what we're discussing right now. Citizens can apply. What we get is citizens who volunteer. I don't think we've had a formal application process in place, if that's what you mean. But I know that with our committees, as you well know, because you serve on them, parents come because they're interested and participate.
Yeah, I was, I was just trying to clarify because recommendation two addresses a policy that's in place and how it is to be, how these committee members are to be selected. And even though it is a current policy, that's not the way it's being done. So I just, I just wanted some clarification.
My question is, if we get an influx of person, citizens who wants to be a part of whatever committee, what is the process? Do we then gather everybody? We have to look at everything and then wean people out? What is, what will be the final?
The last things I read, we would consider this, okay? First of all, if parents, say if thirty parents come and they want to be on the Gifted Education Committee, they would, we would look at these five things, but it wouldn't be a deterrent for them. We could consider if we have representation from all the burrows, if we have, if the people have, they have to, one, express an interest in wanting to be there. So they're being a part of it. The need for diversity, we hope, we get a diverse population that represents the parents who are involved in this. I would think, I would think with, for instance, CAC, Mr. Mitnick, you serve as our CAC representative, if we have parents who are interested in participating and who can indeed help with that, we want to make sure there's no blocking anybody from being in it. In the first one, we would take away part of the positions that are there. I think we have one committee, and I'm going to ask Mr. Waller, one committee that has a cap. Isn't that the Health and something that had twenty?
I really can't remember off the top of my head which one it is.
I think that was the Health one. The rest of them don't have a cap.
I do recall that one of them does in fact have a cap.
Did you have something? Yes. I think, Mr. Jenkins?
I think the...
Okay, thank you. It's all right. Ms. Jakes, I think the idea was, first of all, we just want a lot of citizen, we want to open this and make sure citizens are on, on the committee, and yes, all of those five. I think these five, A through E, are really good, that, and it would be the school board, we would develop an application, online or otherwise, and then they would apply. And where there's a cap, you know, we'd have to choose twenty-two, and we would use those criteria. That, that was, that explains B. I think I introduced number one because if, let us say, out of the twenty-two, if all of them came from two boroughs, maybe for the gifted, I felt that if we had a chance to appoint from our boroughs, it would guarantee a representative from each borough. So that in case we, we received applications and they turned out to be all from the same borough or just two or three boroughs, I thought it would be good to have an option where the board may appoint from our own borough so that we were guaranteed a representative from each borough. And then after that, we would go ahead and fill the remaining spots up to whatever the cap was, and we would go ahead and fill it by the applications that came in. But if each of us had the opportunity to appoint initially, then that would guarantee that there would be at least one person from each borough on each advisory committee. And after that, it would be totally by interest. So if the cap is around, I think the cap was around twenty or twenty-two, you would still have thirteen to fifteen positions that would be open to the community at large, no matter what borough they came from. But you would at least have one from each borough on each advisory committee represented. So that would be looking at recommendation one, both parts A and B, or just B, we just leave it open, and then if all boroughs aren't represented because all haven't, because they all haven't applied, I mean, or, what do I say? If it's open, then if they all come from two or three boroughs, that's just the way it is because we have to take from those that applied. Is that, that's how I saw it, and that's how one came into being, so that there was a rep, something, someone represented from each borough, plus at large.
Madam Chair, my recommendation is to, is that we move forward and adopt recommendation one, where we could appoint our own appointees and it still be open to the public at large. Per subsection B that was quoted earlier, it, it gives provisions for us to fill it with the general public. Missing seven seats, I don't think that would be pivotal in the success or failure of the committee.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes. I move that we accept recommendation one.
Can I say something first? I'm sorry. If that be the case, I want to make sure that just because we choose someone, it doesn't give them authority over everybody else.
No. And that, that, that was my position. If we are, right, and that was my position. If we are, if we are choosing the people, if we are seating the committee, I saw it that way. If we're seating the committee with people we want to be on the committee, this, to me, I envisioned a real Citizen Advisory Committee where people who are interested in an issue would come and share their interests with us, not people who would take our views to the committee meeting to possibly impose our views on the rest of the people who are part of. And the other part is, if that, if that does not occur, the other part of that is, who do you decide to put off the committee? We have more than, say, gifted advisory, we have more than twenty parents in our gifted program who may be interested in participating. How do we decide that they can't be a part of the committee? If the committee is indeed limited to a certain number, how do we decide who's to pick, who we get, who gets the other thirteen slots? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm envisioning, envisioning an advisory committee is a group of interested citizens who want to give us some input with regard to what we do. That's, that's just my feeling with regard to...
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak. My concern is, if we appoint people, do they have a genuine interest in that committee? And again, we are looking at the fact that if we open it up for volunteers, they would have a genuine interest in the committee and what that particular committee is all about. That's the only concern about us appointing people. And so just for my opinion about it. Mr. Mitnick, you had something else?
Yes, I'd like to make one comment. Serving on the CAC as, as a consultant for the last five years, one of the problems has been, the parents that come are interested, but it's almost like their opinion is one voice, that we have not had citizens from throughout the city, or we have not, at times, have not had a diverse group of citizens on the committee. So the, the decisions of the CAC have been based upon the people who were interested, but not necessarily representative of the entire city of Suffolk. So I would like to second Mr. Riddick's motion to adopt recommendation number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Permission to speak. Before we call the question, I just want us to be quite clear here that these committees are not new in the aspect of, most of them are not new. There's policy where there's already rules and guidelines as to how these committees are to operate, the framework and structure is already there. So the idea of us taking, or an appointee taking the committee and, and running with it, I, I, I think we are kind of, you know, looking a little too far into it. And then when we look at far as who you appoint, I believe we have board members who are capable to identify persons in their respective borough who have a interest, and that's the part, we elect by the people. So we should be in touch with our constituents in our respective boroughs while we could appoint someone to serve on a committee that has a valuable interest. So I, I, I think we would be in the best interest of all fourteen thousand students if we had a representative from each borough, as well as those who are interested. So with that being said, I'd like to call for the question.
Oh, okay. Okay. May I?
Wait a minute. Yes, Dr. Buck.
One thing. If you have people in your borough who are interested with option two, you don't have to appoint them, they can go. So if you have someone, say, who wants to be on the gifted committee, they can go. You don't have to appoint them. They can go to the meeting, they can write a letter of interest, they can fill out an application, they can go. There's no limit.
With that, it, it's still a interview process if you have more, if, if you have more, according to what you expressed earlier, you would use the following subsections of item B, A through E, to make a determination as to whether they would be appointed to that committee. I think we should just leave it as one. Madam Chair, I call for the question. The motion has been properly made in second regarding that we accept to appoint seven representatives from each borough and relieve the remaining committee members to the application process or the letter of intent or interest.
Regarding the appointment process for citizens to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee, Mr. Riddick has made a motion to accept the recommendation one, that each school board member will appoint one citizen from the school board member's borough to serve on the Citizen Advisory Committee, and remaining appointments will be made as provided for in School Board Policy. The motion is carried, forty-three.
The second. Do you want to go to the... I think that would be number four on our list. Number five is Policy Review Committee recommendation, when reports are due to the school board from Citizen Advisory Committees. And...
And I think all of you have read that. Dr. Buck, would you like to review those two recommendations?
Recommendation one, citizen advisory committees will report to the school board at intervals determined by the school board based on the need of the school board action, subject matter and complexity of the assignment. School Board Policy Section 2 dash 2.72C provides, unless otherwise specified, the school board will determine when committee reports are due and the format required for any such report. Recommendation two, all citizen advisory committees will be required to report twice a year, first or second semester.
Is there a motion? Is, well, it's jumping around here. Mr. Mitnick?
Madam Chairman, I move that the board adopt recommendation one.
Madam Chair, my recommendation is that we don't adopt neither, that we institute a third. I believe that because they can determine how many times they meet, I believe they should report after every meeting. And you could have a minimum of two reports. But if they're meeting four times out of a year, but we say you only report twice, then we're not staying current with what that advisory committee is. The, the job is for them to advise us and help us move forward. So I mean, that's my thought process on the matter.
Anyone else? Ms. Dor.
Um, Mr. Riddick, I, I concur with that. I think that if we're going to have advisory committees meeting, then they should come back to the board and advise. And I would concur with that. But it was, the way it is now, it was just difficult to come to a consensus about them meeting. And I'm not happy with either of these. And I would be open to a suggestion for a third because we certainly don't hear from our advisory committees very often at all. Since I've been on the board, I have not, we did get a written report, but I had not heard from CAC. So, and we did get a written report this month. But it would seem to me that if they're going to meet and for them to feel valued and that what they're discussing and what they would like to advise, I would also like to hear from them after each meeting. However, I think that's why I put in there a minimum would be record to report twice a year because the way it is now, it seems to me, I've only heard from the committees once. And if they're meeting and they have things that are happening, I as a board member would like to hear about it in recommendations. So I would be open to that, the way, we have a motion on the floor to accept one. But what's happened with one, one is sort of how it is now and then we don't hear from them. And if we're going to ask these, if we're going to ask these people to come and advise us, then I would like to hear from them after they meet. So I hear what you're saying.
Madam Chair, point of order. Due to the fact that our agenda has been approved of these two recommendations, we cannot add an additional one. We have the, only the option of either supporting recommendation one or recommendation two within the vote. Thank you.
In reference to the reporting, it appears that there are going to be board members on each committee. And I would suggest that we allow the board members to report back on behalf of the committee. Thank you.
That's a good point. We'll call for the question.
Call for the question.
Um, we don't have a second.
Yes, we do. It was already second, sorry.
Regarding when reports are due to the school board from citizen advisory committees, the recommendation has been made by Mr. Mitnick and seconded that the citizen advisory committees will report to the school board at intervals determined by the school board based on the need for the school board action, subject matter and complexity of the assignment. The motion is carried.
Next is the policy review committee recommendation. Minimum number of school board members to stir, serve on standing committees. Dr. Buck?
Um, the board had, the committee, the subcommittee had two recommendations for the board to consider. One would be to, one, keep the current number of board members serving on each standing committee with alternates. School Board Policy 2 dash 2.7 dash 2D provides that the school board will determine the number of school board members to serve on standing committees and the number of citizens to serve on citizen advisory committees. In determining the number to serve on a committee, the school board will take into consideration, but not be limited to, the following. A, complexity of the assigned task. B, I'm sorry, am I reading the wrong thing? Pardon me, reading the wrong thing. At any rate, keep the standing committees as they are. Or choice two was set a minimum number of three board members to serve on all committees of the school board. We would keep two with an alternate, that's choice one. Or the second recommendation is to have three board members to serve on each board of standing committees.
Mr. Mitnick?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend that the board adopt recommendation two, that the minimum number of board members on standing committees be three.
Ms. Dor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would hope that this could, that I, I would highly recommend that there be three. When there is two, there's no deciding vote. And so it ends up coming back to the board and I don't think they're functioning. You know, I, I think the committee would function better if they could come back with a set recommendation. And I think Mr. Waller has talked about that with us so that we could have, always have a deciding vote and have three as a minimum at each committee. So we've had a lot of things that have been, we've not been able to come to a consensus on, so it's been difficult to bring it back to the board with a, a strong recommendation. So I'm recommending that also that we have three minimum.
May I?
Yes.
Dr. Buck?
I looked at the recommendation one and recommendation two. And the reason I wanted it brought back to the board was this. We have some board members who are retired, like me. We have other board members who are working. There are some committees that meet every week. There are some committees that meet once a quarter. There are seven of us and five committees. It would be a burden on some folks to attend all of the meetings. And to be there, to not be there isn't helpful either. The other thing is that as a subcommittee of two or three, we really aren't making a decision. We're making a recommendation that we bring back to you and you can vote down, but we're really not making a decision about certain things. We're, we're deciding to exclude something that somebody wants or somebody's voted over in the subcommittee, but we're bringing it back to the board actually for the real decision to be made. So my position was that it should remain as it is simply because there are times when some of us have problems and we have to be in other places. I'm an alternate for several of the committees. And I know that if somebody is sick, if somebody has to be absent, if somebody has to be somewhere, then I have to be there. And I think it just depends on the task that you're assigned. For instance, the persons who work on pupil personnel, the pupil personnel committee have to meet usually through, every week, if not every week, close to it. We might have some exceptions, but it's most of the time meeting. And so my position is that is going to be more of a burden for those people who serve on those committees and who serve as alternates on those committees than it would be for everybody else. And to keep it balanced, I think if we do two and an alternate, it will work because eventually questions are coming back to the board anyway. That's my two cents for. But there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah. Motion on the floor.
We do need a second.
Yep.
I second it.
Regarding the minimum number of school board members to serve on standing committees, the recommendation has been made to accept recommendation number two. Set a minimum number of three members to serve on standing committees. If board members will please vote. The motion is denied, 43.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have committee membership 2019, 2020. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you look at the committee membership breakdown, we wanted to take the time to provide a listing of the different committees that we have for community and citizen input. At this point in time, in case there are any questions, I've asked for Dr. Harrison to be available if there's any questions from the board on the listing of the committees, the makeup or the overall goal of the committees themselves.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Gordon and school board members. As Dr. Gordon just stated, here to answer any questions that you might have. As you may recall, this was information that was presented or was, was shared last month and was tabled for this month's board meeting. And these are the committee recommendations that we're presenting to you this evening.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, Madam Chair. With the policies that were passed this evening, how will that affect the assignment of individuals to these committees? Because I don't believe that it's consistent. Do we vote on these tonight and then next year, the new policies go into place? Is that what the recommendation is?
Madam Chair, if I may. According to your, your policy guidelines, policies take effect upon their adoption. So that means the policy that you adopted just a few minutes ago on the makeup of citizen advisory committees takes effect, which means that it will trump what you now have in front of you. So, so these committee assignments, citizen committee assignments must now be made in accordance with the policy that you just adopted.
Yes, yes, Dr. Buck?
So then the question becomes, do we go about putting people off of committees and selecting people who are there? Or just adding the number of people to the committee? Adding a citizen from each committee or finding out the committee makeup and then making sure there's somebody there from every borough?
Ms. Mayor?
Uh, I'm concerned that if these people have volunteered to participate, I think that would be very disappointing to them if they have agreed to serve.
Mr. Riddick?
Maybe it's just the way I'm processing things. We don't, for, I, let's look at, let's look at the rules. If it's a committee that's at capacity, then we have that situation. If it's not a committee that's at capacity, then it would be no issue to add them. But we have one more month remaining and we have to do committees all over again in January, if I'm correct?
No, that's for standing.
Oh, for standing committees? Okay, so, I mean, my recommenda, my recommendation is that we look into the committees we have, look into the structure, and we see for whom we need to do what. And then when we come back for our next meeting, we can devise a plan and a work session or yield it to Dr. Gordon's staff to give us recommendations on how to move forward. But for us at this point tonight, to make a decision as do we start unloading people from committees, I, I think that's the cart before the horse. I think we really need to look at the rules of each committee, see how many people we could have, and then move forward from there versus us being proactive but inventing a problem when there may not be a problem.
Mr. Waller? If I have in, from the Nansman Borough, if I have seven people on a committee and somebody else, well, let me see, if I have 14 people on committee and somebody wants to put a committee member from other committees, is that, is that what we're doing, looking to see where people are from? And then deciding, for instance, if you don't have someone from CAC, then you would appoint somebody to the CAC board? Or CAC has its own policies now, I understand. They, they already had policies in place, so maybe that's not a good committee. If I have people who are on the gifted committee and you don't have someone on the gifted committee, does that mean you're going to send someone, you're going to find someone in your borough to send to the gifted committee meeting to be your representative? Because if we're not talking about pulling people off, we're talking about putting people on. Would that be, is, is that what you were thinking about? Yeah, is that what you were thinking about? Because in, in doing what we just did with the, with the policy.
No, that's not what I'm thinking about. What I'm thinking about is, as long as we make any type of decision, that's to look and see what I.
What this, what's the layout of the terrain? Do we, is the committee at capacity? And then from there, if adding a representative from each borough is permitted, then you just go ahead and you add your representative according to what you were saying. But I don't, I don't think we, we, we really don't have to do much tonight. It's just look at the rules for each committee, see what's allowed and what's not allowed, and then see how it fits with what we approved tonight.
I have a question, Mr. Waller. Can we say tonight that what we've just adopted, can we make a, another motion, say for instance, that that would take place next year? That that would be something that would occur next year? That for the time being, we keep the people we now have that are already listed here?
Yeah. The, the, the problem that you're going to run into is something that Dr. Gordon made reference to a few moments ago. And that is you approved your agenda. And by approving the agenda, these were the only items that you were going to be discussing tonight. So you're talking about adding something to this agenda that was not part of it.
Not a part of it.
I, my recommendation to you would be that you just table the appointment of these committees. And, and between now and next month's meeting, each board member will have a chance to bring back their borough representative that can probably be added to the list of names that are already here. For example, for a lot of these citizen advisory committees, you can have up to 20 people. And I don't think any of these committees right now is at 20. So it gives you some room to add people from your individual boroughs to serve on these committees consistent with the policy that you just adopted. And then in addition to that, you could then approve the names that are already here. So it will not be a matter of your reme- So it will not be a matter of you removing anyone. You would simply adding people from your borough to also serve on these committees.
Madam Chair, and I would also, thank you, Mr. Waller. I would also encourage that the board takes a look at their current members that are listed here to see which boroughs they are currently in, as you may be able to confirm or give your support to that person actually being a part of the committee as well.
And I, I want us to find out, I believe that in the, I'm sorry. I believe that in the meeting, we talked about the fact that there was only one committee, I believe, I remember that, that had a limit on it. The other committees did not have a limit as prescribed by Virginia Code. The, that the safety or health, I think the health committee, was it S H A B? Shaab was the one that had the, the twenty person limit. I don't think, I think we talked about the fact that the others did not.
Dr. Brooks, if I may, I, I may need to verify that. I know the health one does have a limit of twenty, but I believe that is, that I believe that's the only one that actually has the limit. But we can go back and confirm that for you.
Ms. Dory.
I would like to table it until we go back and we look at what we have passed for each, we've actually already passed for each of the advisory committees. I think we should just table it, go back, and so we have it in front of us. Who is to be on the advisory committee? We followed the law, we followed the code when we presented that to you. And I think we should have that, we should go back, look at that. Mr. Waller could send us, to us again in an email. Look at it and then decide, and then have that discussion whether this, these, these names presented to us, how that matches up with the policy we just passed and with the, what the Virginia Code and our policy, because they agree as to who should be on the advisory committee. So I would like to table it.
Mr. Mitten, you had something?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to table this and come back next month, we're going to need to know, these parents that are on the committees, what boroughs they live in, because I don't, I don't know. And I also, could we, what are the standing committees that we're appointing? I know it's the School Health Advisory Board.
No, those are advisory committees. The standing committees are the ones that TPC, policy.
Which advisory boards are we appointing citizens to?
So, Mr. Mitten, it would be the School Health Advisory Committee, the Title I Advisory Committee, the Gifted Advisory Committee, CAC, Special Education Advisory Committee, and one that was just recently added is the Family Life Advisory Committee.
There's also.
And I'm sorry, CCAP.
There's also the School Safety Audit Committee.
Push your button. Push your button.
Some of these don't even exist as of right now, I guess. So, yeah, I, I guess we really need some directions.
Ms. Dory.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, you should have it in front of you in your, in your board book, the full listing of all of the committees and the members who are being proposed this evening, proposed to be added to those committees for this evening. And those are ones that we presented each year to the board.
Ma'am, I withdraw my, I, it's here, so I withdraw my.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, with Board Member Storid withdrawing her, her motion to table, I would like to re, you said you withdraw it? Which one are you withdrawing? Okay, because when you say withdrew, that means motion, okay. Well, then, since she didn't withdraw her motion, I would like to second her motion.
Ma'am. There's a motion on the floor and a second and a request. Dr. Buck?
Is it out of order for me to talk now, because it's been seconded?
Well, there's still going to be additional discussion.
Okay. The only thing that I'd like to say right now is, one, schools started a long time ago. People are already working on these committees. They've already met, they're already working, they've already made plans. And the issue of tabling approval, again, it's already been moved and seconded, so all we can do is vote. But it's just, I'd just like to throw that out there. People are already working, they're already on the committees. They've already started because we're almost halfway through the school year. So when we vote, let's keep that in mind. And the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, so.
The motion is on the floor to table the approval of the committees until the next meeting. If board members will please vote. The motion is denied, four to three.
A point of order.
Yes.
A point of order. I think we just voted against our policy. I'm not sure, but I think we just voted against the policy we just passed. I'm not sure, but it's gotten confusing to me. We did. We just voted on a policy of how to put these advisory committees into play. So either we, we really cannot vote to accept these, this committee because we just voted a little while ago of how we were going to make up our advisory committees. And that takes precedent. So there is no other thing to do. We could vote against this, I guess. We don't even really have to vote against it because these committees weren't created according to our policy that we just voted on. And the law says it takes place immediately. So therefore, there isn't anything to do but to table it. I don't think we can vote against it.
Ma'am Chair. Oh, Mr. Riddick, Mr. Riddick?
I, I second that because from my understanding of Robert Rules of Order, you, once you put in a policy, it's, it's active immediately. You can't go against it. This is not saying you're taking people off. I think we're looking at it from the wrong end of the lens here. We're not trying to take anyone off a committee. We're not trying to, change happens, whether we like it or not, change happens. And this change has happened, it has already been motion properly seconded and approved. Now, what I believe what we were trying to do is figure out how we can look at the climate and see what's going on, because, and looking at the, the people we have on these committees, for most of the committees with the exception of gifted, you have a lot of staff. So if, I, I think we're inventing a problem that may not necessarily be to the way that we are putting it off to be. But according to the rules and structure, we, this motion is a dead motion. It, it didn't count because our policies state that we would enact the committee based off of seven appointments and the letter of interest, application, whichever language we want to use, but what we just voted on. And what we, what was just done was you approved a list submitted that didn't follow that process. So because that process was not followed, that approval, it obstructs our law and therefore is not valid.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Buck.
I think that there's a way to do this without waiting until next month to, we can, we can have some time to appoint people from our communities, because I think that was, that was the big issue, making sure we had somebody to appoint from our committee. Was that not the big issue?
No, when I made the recommendation, our recommendation was that before we do anything, we look and see what, what is the actual situation per committee? Because in some situations.
It's, it's not an issue. There's only one committee where this may really impact some people, and that's the committee that has the, the membership cap. By tabling it, it gives Dr. Gordon's team to, time to go back and figure out where people live and give that information to the board members. So if we wanted to reappoint them or if they wanted to continue on the committee or, I mean, people move all the time, so to, that, that's what was being addressed. When, I think, when the board, when we kind of got ahead and, and looked at it as if we were kicking people off, we missed that aspect, that, that, this would give us the additional time we needed to make an informed decision.
Dr. Buck.
Again, I'll go back to the two tenets that I saw in the policy. One is the two additional things. One is, we all want to have, make sure somebody from our boroughs are on the committees. That's one, right? Right? And then the other part is a letter of intent or an application or whatever else, okay? But the big issue is, it is November and people are already on the committees. So to go back and table it and say, well, the committee's not operating, next month, the committee, it will be December. And we're halfway through the school year. So the only thing that I see that we can do is to add a person from each of our boroughs to the committees. And we can, if we so desire, to have people fill out a form who are already there or write us a letter or do whatever, if we're not talking about putting people off. If we're just talking about making sure that we're represented, that would be adding. And the other part is, if we want to have documentation, we can develop a form, a form letter, or whatever we want to do, and have people who are already working, because it's November and next month will be December, have them fill out our forms so that we will be in compliance with the rule we just made.
Madam Chair, if I could make a suggestion that may help, and that is to approve the committee names as presented, subject to the board members appointing at next month's board meeting additional members to serve on these committees along with them.
Dr. Buck?
Approve what he just said. Okay.
Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, although it is a nice recommendation, it's still in violation of our policy. And per, per guidelines and Robert Rules, any board member at a time could call this into information. And, and what I'm speaking of, this could be rectified by the recommendation that you just stated, Dr. Buck. If you table this appointment to December and notify the committee members, hey, if you wish to remain on the committee, could you please send a email stating that you would like to remain on the committee? That suffices our policy that we just approved in addition to our appointment. That, that, it's not pretty much how we feel about it, but it's how it's written. And it's written that we have to receive a, 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 a letter or some form of information from them. But it doesn't say if it has to be electronically, it doesn't say hard copy, and that we have room to appoint one person from each borough. That's the policy that's in place, and that's what we are going to have to follow by. Whether it's common practice or not, that doesn't matter at the moment. We decided tonight on a new common practice. So going forward, we will have to stick to our policy.
Madam Chair. Ms. Dory.
Thank you. I want to also bring up that the definition of the advisory committees, it lists, and that's why I think we have to have it in front of us, it lists the recommendations of all the various type of community people that are to be on these advisory committees. It goes through the list, it goes through of who, this is in the law. It goes through a list of people from the community that should be on these advisory committees. We don't have that in front of us. And I can tell you from looking at it a long time, administrators are not, the way it's written, it, all these administrators are not on them, is not part of that Virginia Code. These are community advisory committees. Now, if we want to add that to our policy, but we did not. We followed the Virginia Code exactly. And it does not include all of the administrators that appear on these lists. I just think we need it in front of us. I don't know, yes, it's been a long time, but, Dr. Buck, if you remember, I was ready and wanted these things to be brought to in July. We had already voted on this coming to the board and it never made it. So one more month isn't going to hurt anything. We can go back to our July minutes and see that this, these items were to be brought to the board after our July policy meeting, and they never made it. One more meeting so that we do it right is not, they're just advisory committees. It's not going to stop the earth from rotating. It's going to be okay. And I would rather get it right and read through our committee description and get it right than try to mismatch and patch something together here when we've decided on a policy. And I, I agree with Mr. Riddick, that's, we have to now follow the policy we passed.
Dr. Buck, I would just say that that's the reason that I asked that man who's all the way on the end. And I don't believe that Mr. Waller would advise us to violate the law. We're trying to figure out how to reverse what we did or how to amend what we did so that it is appropriate. I'm sure he would not have told us that that's an option if he thought it was illegal. I, I, from what I hear from you, Mrs. Dory, about what you've read into this, I don't think it's in our policy, what type of citizen that we can bring to the committee. But, 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 I, I, at this point in time, it's either in the middle of the school year, we're talking about switching people who've already been working this year, and we're trying to find a solution to make a difference. Okay, I'm done.
Madam Chair, from looking at the information that was submitted to us on new business, I believe it's item four, when you look at these committees, you see a lot of them have a lot of Suffolk Public Schools staff. In most cases, the staff outnumber the citizens. So tabling it, un, until we get more adequate research and data, it's not going to impede, I don't believe our staff are going anywhere that's on this list. I, I, I really want us to do best, and I, I think the main focal point for us as a board is to get a buy-in from our constituents. And if that means tabling it so we can get more people, more parents, because looking at the list, it's only one, it's only two committees where the parents outnumber staff, and that's the Gifted Advisory Committee as well as the Parent Advisory Committee, and that's by two parents. I just counted. So I think we should table it, give Dr. Gordon's team information and time that they can gather everything that we need so we can make an informed decision. The decision that was just voted upon, per rules and regulation, it can't count.
Dr. Buck?
Let me say this. As I look out at the staff, first of all, they are our citizens. They're people who live in Suffolk for the most part. Many of them have students, children, who are on, who have these situations, either in special education, or they may be in the gifted program, another end of special education, exceptional education. They may be, may have interest, for whatever reason, in some other activities. Oftentimes, the staff will stay there so they can keep the committee going because some of the committees are people who might not have some of the specific knowledge, so the staff helps them with those kinds of things they are needed of. As far as I'm concerned, if there's a way to fix this without causing more confusion and chaos, it would be great. As far as I'm concerned, if there's a way to fix this without causing more confusion and chaos, it would be great. I'm done.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Uh, just for some clarity, um, the staff that we do have on our committees, in almost all cases, and Dr. Harrison, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are there in advisory role, are not allowed to vote. Uh, the numbers that we see, and I think Dr. Brooks-Buck just described that, of the total numbers of staff are there when we have had low, uh, citizen input or attendance on some of our committees. The suggestion that Mr. Waller gave on how to kind of clean this up a little bit, because I think there's been several points that have been made. Um, realistically, we probably should have had the procedures for the selection of the citizens, any citizens on any of our advisory committees to occur this summer, before the selection of the committees actually occurred themselves. At, at this point in time, um, I would like to restate again that we would like to give the board an opportunity to take a look at those folks that are already listed and see what boroughs they are in, to follow Mr. Waller's suggestion of giving us the opportunity to still have these committees be subject to review, which does not violate the policy that was just voted upon, and to basically move forward from there.
Mr. Riddick?
I got a question. Mr. Waller, according to state statute and our rules that we got to abide by, can we lawfully ex, act upon these names today, given our current policy that is implemented effective the day of adoption? Can we lawfully approve this list?
Give me one minute.
Madam Chair, can I say one thing while he?
Yes.
Is going into that. I'm, I'm 100% aware that most staff who serve on committees operate in dual roles. You're a parent of a child within Suffolk Public Schools. However, being a bus driver, past tense, before the, the new administration, I drove, I served on the bus drivers advisory committee. And being a bus driver, as well as a parent, as well as an employee, I didn't come and say a lot of things that I wanted to say, because it was set double negative. This is my boss. And at that time, I'm not going to call his name, who was the transportation coordinator. We were tight-lipped because we didn't want retaliation. That's why it's important that you have some people who don't have that type of situation going on. And I, and doing it Mr. Waller way, or whomever way, that extends it to give us time to put more people on who don't have that same situation going on. I think there, we, we would get most of the meat from. That's not discarding anyone that's already there, that's not saying they're not viable, that's not trying to unload you. But we want to have parents on board that don't have that type of pressure. Thank you.
Mr. Waller?
Your, your policy says that the school board will, um, determine the process for receiving applications and or letters of interest. It's up to you to interpret what that means and how you apply it. You could interpret that to mean that the memorandum you get tonight from the school administration constitutes your, um, letter of interest on behalf of these citizens. And there, and therefore, you act, you're acting on that.
Question. Under the same clause, it says, the school board will also issue a public announcement. Are we covered with that, using the old public announcement that we done prior to this new policy? I just want to make sure we got all of our Ts crossed and all of our Is dotted.
Dr. Gordon?
Madam Chair, so anytime we have a listing of any items in our agenda, that's considered to be a public announcement.
Okay.
So we should be okay there. Thank you, Mr. Riddick.
Thank you.
Okay, um, committee membership is there? Any other discussion? Mr. Mittig?
Yes, uh, I would like to just say, the special ed advisory committee works a little differently. The only people that have votes on the special ed advisory committee are those parents. The rest of us are listed as consultants and are there to give them advice and to get information for them, so that when they do make their votes, um, they are making informed decisions. I'm not sure if that's how all of the advisory committees are working, but it works very well for the special ed advisory committee.
Ms. Dory?
Mr. Waller, can you find, please, the, um, committee, the advisory committees and the descriptions that we've already passed, please? And other than CAC, I believe when we passed them, there were three. Would you be willing to read those, please, in, uh, to us now? Thank you.
Go to him.
Why, Mr. Waller, is researching to get that information? I just want to be clear, when I leave from here, what we're doing. The names that were submitted tonight, are we, did the vote count where we approved them tonight? Or we're going to hold off, uh, until we get the names recommended? Because what he said was that additional names would be submitted, and it, he used some language, I can't recall exactly the way he said it, but it led me to believe that we will reapprove everyone together. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, to make sure we didn't violate our own policy by doing it tonight.
Mr. Waller?
Let me give you the names of the committees, and then I'll, um, address the, the question that Mr. Riddick just posed. Um, you have the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, the School Health Advisory Board, School Safety Audit Committee, Parent Advisory Council, Local Advisory Committee for Special Education, and they are the five. I think that's it.
Could you read the description for, except for CAC? Could you read the description for say two of them? Please.
Got to wait for my computer to, let me move. Okay. I'll read the one for the School Safety Audit Committee. Um, this committee will es, will be established to evaluate, in accordance with the directions of the school board, the safety of each school, which shall include assessing the school's violence and discipline problems, and in designing appropriate programs, policies, and practices to combat such problems, and submit a plan for improving school safety at a public meeting of the school board.
Second.
Career and Technical Education? That was one I didn't call out, but that's listed here too. So it's a total of, looks like it's a total of six, six of them. Career and Technical Education Advisory Council will be established, as set forth in Regulation of the State Board of Education. The functions of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council will be to provide recommendations to the school board on current job needs and the relevancy of career and technical education programs, offered and to assist in the development, implementation, and evaluation of the local plan and application.
Is that from our policy?
Yes.
Dr. Buck? Madam Chair, at this point in time, I'd like to call for the question. I think it's time to approve the committees that we have. We've talked about a solution to end our problem. We've talked about whether it's legal or not. And I think we, it's time to move on. So, my motion is that we go ahead and approve the names that have been submitted for committee members for those advisory committees, that we follow our plan to add additional persons, and that we move on from this point. That's my motion. Is there a second? Mr. Mittig?
Second motion.
Madam Chair, there's a question that was on the floor prior to the motion being made that, um, Mr. Waller hadn't given his answer to.
Okay, Mr. Waller?
And I, I believe the, um, my, my recommendation, which is consistent with the motion that's now on the floor, is that the names presented tonight be accepted, subject to the board being able to provide additional names from their boroughs at next month's board meeting.
And with that, subject to the board, so in areas where we are nearing probably capacity, uh, what does that mean? Because we got a gray area there.
Madam Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, and Dr. Harrison, I may need your expertise on this. We only have one committee that actually has a maximum number.
That's all. That's all.
And that would be the only committee, um, Mr. Riddick, we probably would have to review.
Okay.
Just for names. I think the others, I, I actually believe will be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we vote. There's a motion and a second.
Motion onto the floor to approve the names as submitted tonight, subject to additional names being added at next month's school board meeting by school board appointees. If school board members will vote. Motion is carried, five to two.
Uh, next, we have ordinance for first reading. Uh, ordinance nineteen twenty dash thirty-four, amending chapter seven, article six, section seven dash six point one, entitled Tobacco Products and Nicotine Vapour Products Prohibited. Tobacco products prohibited on school bus. Superintendent to develop regulations of the policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-five, amending chapter seven, article six, section seven dash six point two, entitled Definitions of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-six, amending chapter seven, article seven, section seven dash seven point three, entitled Exchange of Gifts Not Encouraged. Solicitation prohibited, except with written authorization. Solicitations for contributions to charitable organizations, et cetera, of the policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-seven, amending chapter eight, article one, section eight dash one point one, entitled Excellence in Education. Environment conducive to learning, standards of quality and objectives, reporting compliance of the policies of the Suffolk School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen da, slash twenty dash thirty-eight, amending chapter eight, article five, section eight dash five point three, entitled Approval Selection and Adoption of Supplementary, supplementary materials by the school board. Purpose of supplementary materials, teacher review required of the policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-nine, amending chapter eight, article six, section eight dash six point two, entitled Character Education Required. Basic character traits listed, use of classroom instruction of the policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty, amending chapter eight, article seven, section eight dash seven point three, entitled Online and Virtual Programs permitted. Courses and program offerings posted on the website. Enrollment and residence requirement. Teachers licensed by the Board of Education, and administrators must hold advanced degree. Definitions of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-one, amending chapter eight, article nine, section eight dash nine point one, entitled Physical Education Program. Must comply with state law. Goal of the Suffolk Public Schools, the policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-two, amending chapter eight, article ten, section eight dash ten point one, entitled Drug Ed, Education of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen sla, dash, slash twenty dash forty-three, deleting chapter eight, article eleven, section eight dash eleven point two, entitled Community Involvement Team of the Policies of the Suffolk School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-four, deleting chapter eight, article two, section eight dash eleven point four, entitled Separate Sessions of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-five, deleting chapter eight, article eleven, section eight dash eleven point five, entitled Opt-Out Procedures of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. Ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-six, adding a new section, chapter eight, article twenty-one, section eight dash twenty-one, one point one, entitled Definition of Official School Publications. Responsibilities of Student Editors and Journalists. Responsibilities of Student Publications, Faculty Co-Chair. Responsibilities of the Principals of the Policy of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. And ordinance nineteen slash twenty dash forty-seven, amending chapter two, article three, section two dash three point two, entitled Regular Meetings, Special Meetings, Quorum of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. They are all first reading items. Uh, next, we have informational items. I'm sure you've all looked at those and reviewed those. That's for information. Moving on to, uh, public speakers on non-agenda topics, uh, we have one, Cara Taclet, Tara Taclet. And no others, uh, business by board members. Um, Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. Um, first of all, um, I just want to give a highlight that during the harvest season, um, during Halloween time, I had the, um, honor of visiting the elementary schools because they had a lot of activities during the day with the candy and celebrating, as well as in the evening. And I just want to give a big shout out to all the support staff that participated, because all I saw from the kids was smiles. They were happy. And, and that makes me happy, when you walk through a school and you just see the kids happy and energetic. And also, the staff and administrators there, um, they were happy as, as well. So when you walk in a school and you see smiles, that's a positive. Um, second, I want to, um, congratulate and welcome, um, the new employees, and, um, congratulate the ones that has moved to a different position. And as, um, we say in our church, congratulations to the ones that have been away and back. And I'm talking about you. So, um, um, I like to, um, just welcome you to whatever position that you are in now. You're in it because, um, everyone felt that you deserved it and you would do a good job. And, um, you're just adding more greatness to what is already great here in Suffolk Public Schools. And as we enter the- And as we enter the new holidays, you know, the holidays with Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, if you are on social media, you see that there is just an overwhelming of kids missing and even adults. And so I just want us to be more aware of our surroundings, not just in the holiday season, but in general, because there's a lot of things going on around here. So we have to keep our eyes open and make sure we take extra safety measures of not going around at night by yourselves, whether it be a female or a male, because crime does not discriminate. So I just, you know, I just want to put that out there. Everyone, all the employees, all the staff, no matter what capacity you serve with Suffolk Public Schools, I appreciate you for everything that you do. We cannot be a great Suffolk Public School without you. You are, you are why we are great. And we are just here to try to do the best that we can in our positions, but you're the one out there every day where you see kids that sometimes your hug is the only hug a kid may receive, and that's, that's special. And you all are special, and just know that we put our kids first, and I see you doing that, and I appreciate you, and happy holidays. And I cannot say, leave without saying thank you for all your support during the last, during the campaign of my husband. We rock.
Mr. Mitnick?
Yeah, I'd just like to make, add two comments to, for the discussion. Being incapacitated and not being able to be out and about so much, as I was reading a lot of questions and comments on social media, I realized that there were quite a few concerns about transportation. And I posted a question on a, an app called Nextdoor, and I ask about transportation, your experiences. First, from Ms. Deidre Key, I saw your post on Nextdoor and wanted to address my bus route concerns. We have the world's greatest driver, Ms. Miskin. She's amazing, but she is overworked most days, handling double or triple runs, driving an overcrowded bus and resulting in late evening drop-offs. My kindergartner gets home after 5:00 PM, and last Friday, that's an extremely long day for a five-year-old. Please help our favorite driver out. And the other comment I had was from a Mr. Eric George who lives in Suffolk Meadows. Transportation at best is pretty horrible. Buses are overcrowded, some are on double routes, meaning to school, getting to school late or home even later. Problem is Suffolk only wants to pay eleven bucks an hour for a dri, for a driver, and it's not worth it. I'm in active duty, so I am not able to help drive. Thanks for your time. Hopefully Suffolk wakes up soon and realizes that we are not a small town anymore. Yes, I'm active duty, but I am a homeowner in the city. Dr. Gordon, I'd like to ask the next month for a report on the status of transportation in Suffolk Public Schools, if possible. There seems to be a lot of concern among parents that I read, and you know, the report that you sent to us, you know, the lateness of buses, particularly in the afternoon, and getting to school in the morning and the loss of instructional time is concerning. So I appreciate, I look forward to your comments next month.
Ms. Mayo?
Good evening to all assembled, our fellow board members, Dr. Gordon. First, I would like to offer my thanks to Dr. Gordon for your, how you have worked toward developing positive relationships with the Suffolk Public Schools family and the school community. I thought that the meet the superintendent presentations were well received and invited honest and open dialogue from our stakeholders and about Suffolk Public Schools matters. Also, kudos to our school administrative office staff, our school administrators, teachers, and other valued employees of Suffolk Public Schools for your dedication and commitment to the education of our children. I had an opportunity to attend the academic awards program at Lakeland High School on Nov- November the fourth, along with our board chair, Mrs. Byram. The students were joyful as they received their awards. They were recognized individually, their names were called, and each came forward to receive the, their awards. And we'd like to thank Mr. Wagner and Mrs. Williams, who is the guidance director, and her staff for coordinating this event. Classes twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two were recognized. The program was very enjoyable and well received by those in attendance. Also, I had an opportunity to visit Lakeland for an art workshop. I was invited by Mrs. Angela White, who is the art teacher at Lakeland. And there was a special workshop for all of the schools. Lakeland was the host. We had students from Kings Fork and students from Nassman River there also. And this workshop was sponsored by the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts in conjunction with the Suffolk Art League. So I got to see some wonderful art, and they were doing some different things outside what they would normally do in the classroom. And it had a special, I guess we call it an artisan residence to share and provide certain art opportunities for our students. And each high school will get an opportunity to host one of those events during the school year, I like to say. Also, I'm a big supporter of fine arts. As you well know, I am a musician, so that's extremely important to me as well. I like to give a shout out to our band directors, and I've noticed that our bands have been actively involved in competitions, all of our high schools, and have done extremely well. And these provide opportunities for our students to shine, because our theme says, every child a star. Together, we help them shine. So students get an opportunity not only to shine in the classroom, but in our extracurricular activities that are provided, which provides a well-rounded education for our children. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to address.
Okay, I have, I'm gonna make my stand brief. I talked enough tonight, as it is. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge Ms. Adrian Miller and the guidance counselor staff at Kings Fork High School. Last night, they did a program, it was an HBCU college night, that took place at Kings Fork High School. You're talking about over three hundred students from all over the seven-five-seven. I think the furthest student traveled from Virginia Beach Salem High School to come and gain that information that was given out last night. It was a drama-free event. It was open to the public. Our students showed out. They came. You had Spelman College was literally trying to recruit people based off of the volunteer work. I'm talking about full-paid scholarships they were talking last night. So I just want to let people know in Suffolk that Suffolk has it going on within our school system, and we saw, saw it last night. The place was packed with colleges from near and far. We had a person come all the way from Howard University, drove down just to recruit some of our students, because they know that we have the cream of the crop here in Suffolk. In addition to that, I attended the Hillpoint Elementary School Harvest Fest, and they had our, had the privilege to be one of the judges for their trunk or treat. You're talking about, you couldn't even get into the community of Hillpoint. It was so much community, parent, student, and staff involvement. Everyone was dressed up, and they was all, you know, participating. It was a very momentous occasion. Then today, I attended the Kings Fork High School new principal announcement, and I really liked the, where I was standing, I was in a situation disguised with teachers so I could hear feedback, and they were really excited that they were considered. They were really excited, especially with you, your new format far as interviewing. The vibe I got from being in that black box theater today was, our staff is one thousand percent on board with rocking us forward into the next dimension. The sky's not the limit. It's footprints on the moon. You heard me say it before. So I'm excited about the great things that await Kings Fork High School. And another announcement I do want to let the general public know about is that this Saturday from nine AM to twelve noon, we will be having a, a job fair at Kings Fork Middle School where we will be hiring for bus drivers and things of that sort. I want to let you all know firsthand that it does take a great person to drive a school bus. It's a, it's a, it's a task. Sixty kids and still navigating with one adult and managing the road, it's a task. And it's gonna get better, but things take time. And what I would like to put out there, if you know anyone who is interested in coming on board and joining this division and helping us combat this situation, please come out to this job fair. It's paid training, and we have some good trainers, one is in the house tonight. So I think it's two of them, yeah. So I just want to say, that's my announcement thus far. Thank you.
Ms. Dorrit?
Well, I want to congratulate two Bulldogs. It's good to see you here, Dr. Lee. Congratulations. That's awesome. Glad our Bulldogs are being represented in such a great position. I know you'll do a great job. Mr. Bryant, I'm really excited for you and the position you're gonna have at Kings Fork High School. Bulldogs appreciate you and I think really respect the work you've done there, and I know I did when I was there, so congratulations. And congratulations for your first meeting done, and welcome aboard. And, well, I have a feeling it'll be smooth sailing out here. So welcome aboard and happy Thanksgiving.
Dr. Buck?
Good evening, and thank you for all the hard work you do, all of you. I want to give a special shout out to Northern Shores Elementary School, PTA, for the work they did with the Harvest Fest this year. We have a new PTA president who's doing a marvelous job, so I just want to say thank you to her and to her team for all of the work they did to have an excellent celebration. I also want to say hello to my second graders at Northern Shores that I work with in reading. They like it, we like it, I like it. So we're having a good time, Mrs. Carter's second grade class at Northern Shores. I'd also like to say that we're pleased with what we're doing, we're moving along, and thank you for your first thirty days. We appreciate that. And I also want to say to Cindy once again, I'm gonna really miss you. I don't know about anybody else, I can't speak for anybody else, but I know I'm gonna really miss you. You've been wonderful to me, and I appreciate it. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. I have a couple of things. I, as Ms. Mayo said, we both attended the academic awards at Lakeland High School, and it was outstanding performance by the students. I congratulate them. Mr. Wagner, Wagner's remarks were outstanding and most inspirational. I think it was the best he'd ever done. I told him he was really gonna get an Academy Award for that, but anyway. I also want to congratulate our board member, Ms. Mayo, who was the accompanionist for our entertainment and music that night, which was a big surprise. Everybody should have been there. She did an excellent job. We have a multifaceted and talented group among us, and she was playing for her brother, Carlton Williams, who was singing, and her nephew, Garrett Williams, who performed. And her, of course, her sister-in-law is the guidance director, so it all worked in very well. But I want to commend Ms. Mayo for an outstanding performance. So if you need any entertainment, she's on tap. Very good, Ms. Mayo. And Dr. Gordon, thirty days and counting, right? I think when he met with us, when he applied for this job, he presented us with a large bound copy of his strategies and what he planned, his transition plan. And he's following them, and I'm checking them off as he goes along, and I'm sure some of you will understand what I mean. There are gonna be some changes, there are gonna be some, you know, some tweaks here and there, but I think things are really getting where they should be. He's had a great first thirty days. This is, you know, just an introductory, the best is yet to come. There you go. And in traveling the community and going to the meet and greets at the three high schools, and even afterwards, traveling in the community and so forth, I have heard such positive comments about the transparency and the goals and objectives and the strategies, and people talking about a lot of things that I haven't heard for a long time. I've heard a lot of good ideas, which I hope they're coming to you. I suggest that they email you. I've even suggested, I've had people to tell me that they would like to meet with them, and I've given them a list of names. They have some ideas. Hopefully, they have some money as well, you know. I've told them, but, you know, there are some very good and positive things coming, and we want to keep the ball rolling, so to speak. So congratulations on your first thirty days. Also, I can't stop there. I have to say a little bit about Ms. Jenkins. I know Ms. Jenkins has been pulled and pushed in the seventy-six, running from one engagement to the other. It's very hard to support your spouse, I know that, and she's done a gallant job, but she has been and remained a dedicated school board member. This evening, she could have been at the Governor's Ball in Richmond, but she, as a dedicated school board member, has chosen to be with us, and I think we should commend her for that. And I want to, I want to also congratulate Clint, Clinton, on his victory, and I know she had a lot to do with that. And I just want to put a bug in his ear, you know, I know you're gonna keep telling him, but be sure he supports public education and full funding for many things that we don't get funded for. Amen. We're all on board for that. And Ms. Chavis, you know, I don't want to see you go. I've known you so long, and, and we've worked together so well, and she has really been a godsend for this board and for the school system, and I'm like Dr. Buck, no words can express, but I'm gonna miss you. And I'll, I'll try not to get up at two or three o'clock in the morning and look on my doorstep and see what you deliver, because you know.
What size there may be.
I know. Never know what it would be, or some kind of package that she's bringing to us. But anyway, thank all of you for the work you continue to do, and if there are no other comments, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.